Luke, right here. What's your name? Lily. Lily? What's your name?
Grayson.
Grayson? Nice. Thanks for coming today. Okay. Uh, we're gonna start this meeting with an invocation by Councilmember Smith and a pledge by, with Councilmember Wright.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to be gathered here tonight, and we ask a blessing upon our city and all of our citizens. We ask for health and safety and, and we pray for the leadership of our country and, and state. We're grateful and we say these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
You'll stand and repeat with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I'll accept the motion for the meeting's agenda.
I will motion that we approve the meeting's agenda with an amendment to, um, move item number six to a, uh, a future meeting. I'm not sure if we have a particular date for that, but...
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, looks like most of our crowd tonight is staff. We want to welcome any visitors that we have. We've already welcomed these fine scouts up here tonight, so we're happy to do that. We want to, uh, excuse Mayor Packard. He's, uh, out of town on, on some personal business. And, uh, the rest of these council members nominated and voted me into Mayor Pro Tem, so... My name's Mike Snellson, Councilmember Snellson, so... Alright, uh, I don't have any public comment forms. If there's anyone that would like to make a public comment, we have a form out there. Kim has some. You can turn them into hers. She'll bring them up to me if anybody wants to make a public comment. Okay? Alright, um, and we have a consent agenda that needs to be moved and approved.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Uh, that's a roll call vote. It's just a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Item number two is a public hearing for consideration of the sale of approximately 29 acres of property to the Sun Pro Corporation, which property is located approximately 750 West, 1600 South, and has historically been known as the Santana Property. John, we'll turn the time over to you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers. This item, uh, as was mentioned, is dealing with the old Santana Property. If you look here, this is 1600 South in, uh, Springville. Uh, right now, if you were to go out there, it wouldn't look quite like this picture. There's a, a ramp here, and a ramp here, and a ramp over on this side of the freeway. And those ramps are pretty high. I mean, they're clear up to the, the top of, of the overpass, uh, on 1600 South. And so, as everybody knows, uh, UDOT is redoing this interchange, so there, there can be on and off ramps onto I-15. As I go through this presentation, we did have one person who sent in a public comment, um, Tim Parker. And I'm, he asked a lot of good questions, and so as I go through here, hopefully I can answer his questions as part of this presentation. This is called the old Santana Property. You can kinda still see, I, I believe, the old raceway kinda here in this little circular fashion. Now, this property came into Springville, uh, only about, uh, within the last year. Before that was in the county. And so, you see right now that there is, uh, a temporary, uh, batch plant, concrete batch plant. That actually came into, or was put on the property before it came into the city. So that was put in place under county rules, and currently it is, uh, unlawful, uh, or lawful non-conforming use. And I just wanna make that clear, 'cause that was one of the questions that was brought up, is why isn't code enforcement going after it? It came in with the county, so it was lawful when it went into place. Now it would be considered unlawful underneath the city's ordinances, but it would be grandfathered in. So now to the property in general. So, if you look here, the property was purchased and divided into two transactions, uh, with how it came into the city. The blue area is property that the city, was put into the city's name around 2015 in anticipation for this interchange. Uh, the city did not, however, purchase the property at that time. It was purchased with MAG Corridor Preservation Funds, uh, Preservation Funds. And then MAG doesn't hold property, so the city agreed to hold the property for MAG so that this interchange could be done. And that was about 2015. Uh, one of the other properties that, uh, UDOT needed to pick up was this property in red. Uh, that was owned by, uh, a family, uh, whose last name was Creer. Uh, we did have a prior council member on this council whose last name was Creer. And, uh, he wasn't quite sure who they were, but he did find out he was distantly related to them. And so, that is another question that was brought up by Mr. Parker. So yes, uh, he, they were related, but very distantly. He didn't have much of a relationship with them. Uh, that was purchased for roughly $3.2 million, and we'll kinda show you what's happened with the property since. The blue area, or after, well, let me back up a little bit. After UDOT figured out what property they needed for the off-ramp, then the city could talk to them about officially purchasing the blue area property. And that's roughly 40 acres that you can see there in the light blue. The city did, uh, agree to purchase that, uh, for just, it was, uh, 5.95 million roughly that they purchased it for. The exact number is there on the screen. And then also, uh, UDOT purchased from the city a portion of the red property. Again, that was the Creer property before, for 1.889 million. And then, so just to show you what the city's current basis is in the property, we can go through all the numbers, uh, here. We have 10.21 acres along the freeway that the city purchased. Again, that's that Creer property for roughly 3.2 million. 40.2 acres from MAG for the 5.95 million. Total acres, uh, that the city purchased were 50.41 acres, and the total purchase price, uh, was, uh, 9.15 million. Uh, sell to UDOT, uh, for that off-ramp that's here in this location, right here, uh, was roughly 3.83 acres, and so that sell is for 1.889 million. So the city's current basis in the property is 7.265 million. Now, this sell, uh, to UDOT of this 3.83 million actually brought the city a profit of roughly 180,000 per acre. And so that's right around 685,000 total, uh, off of the sell of that property from what the city purchased. So we haven't made all the money back off the Creer purchase, but we've made a good chunk back, uh, and, uh, we've sold the property, uh, per acre more than, uh, we received it by a pretty long shot. So again, that's the city's basis in the property. Uh, what we did as a city is we did do an open sell of this, and again, that's another question Mr. Parker raises. Uh, and so the open sell, the way we did that was with an RFP. We issued a request for proposals. We put that on all the real estate, uh, websites. Uh, we worked with some people that were in real estate to make sure we hit everybody. We had a lot of, uh, people contact us on the property, a lot of interest in the property. And we did have, uh, multiple, uh, proposals on the property. What we were asking for, again, as you look at the property, uh, the city, uh, owns roughly 50 acres, uh, again, the red and the blue here. And so the proposal asked, hey, give us, uh, the purchase price that you would, uh, give for the property, plus the city's interested in making money off the property into the future. And so what is the use that you'll put on the property, and that's something that was taken into account. And the use that, that generated the most sales tax is what the city was really wanting to, to see on this. Uh, after evaluating all of, uh, the proposals that came in, again, there weren't a ton. There was a lot of, um, people who were interested in the property, called a string, uh, the open sales period, um, uh, but we had fewer, uh, proposals. Uh, but after looking at the proposals that came in, we looked at Sun Pro Corporation proposal as being a proposal that was, uh, a good proposal. Uh, we have had the property appraised before we went out with the RFP. Uh, everything that's in the Sun Pro, uh, offer meets, uh, at least appraised value if, if not exceeds it. Um, and so it, it is, uh, we are not selling this for anything less, meaning us, the city, if, if you were to enter into this agreement, then appraised value. Uh, so, uh, the offer would be to purchase roughly 28.86 acres for 10,057,128 dollars. Uh, what that does is, that would be roughly, uh, 348,000 an acre. I have a num, a number of numbers written down here, which would, depending on if you're looking at the Creer property or the property that, that, uh, the city purchased from MAG, would be a profit of anywhere between 35,000 to 165,000 per acre. Uh, so we'd be making profit over the basis that, that the city has in the property, plus it does meet or exceed appraised value. Uh, the other thing dealing with, uh, the sales tax, uh, Sun Pro Corporation, uh, the use that they propose on this property is a Core III facility. Uh, what that is, is, is the sell of bu, bulk lumber, uh, door and millwork products, garage doors. Uh, they also have some insulation, uh, product, uh, on the, the property as part of that use. Uh, they also would like to use the property for a corporate office. Now, in selling the bulk lumber, the door, millwork, and the garage doors, uh, right now they have other places that they would move in the county to this property. Uh, that's kinda what, what is anticipated. And you'd have sales of over 50 million that could bring in sales tax. You won't get sales tax of 50 million, but you get sales tax of over $50 million per year. And again, that's based on numbers that are currently happening in the market, so i- it looks like a strong, uh, component to bring in sales tax. Uh, just to let you know, that's a pretty decent-sized box store that would, uh, have 50 million. Uh, one of the other things too, looking at this property, and we can show it here, is here is the property off of 1600 South. And one of the issues you have is it is landlocked. It's not landlocked, it's railroadlocked. But anyway, it's a property that is, uh, locked as you come off the freeway. And the way that it's going to work when everything's all said and done is that the overpass will come down, touch down. There'll be an access into the property off of, uh, the 1750, uh, West alignment. And then, there'll actually be another overpass that'll come up over the next railroad pass. And so it kinda drops down. You come into the property, but if you don't come in the property, you go right back up over another railroad pass. So... Now, uh, another thing on this is part of the purchase price. Right now, the property is not developed. Uh, one of the things, uh, that we have been in discussions with Sun Pro is, uh, they would come in and develop the property. Uh, the estimate to do that'd be, uh, $740,000. And what you're looking is to bring in all the utilities, uh, make the connections to 1650 West, uh, get the utilities over to 17, or 16 South, make the connections to 16 South, bring the utilities to 1750 West, come down, and then also make sure that you have, uh, this cul-de-sac and the road into it meets all the city's standards. And so that the purchase, uh, the 28.86 acres, oh, I apologize, would be what you see here, kind of in this, uh, dark gray, um, black area, which would then leave two parcels that the city would still have, uh, for future sale. But those parcels then would be fully developed and would be worth, uh, more money. Just a couple of things, uh, in the agreement, uh, some pertinent provisions, is the due diligence is for 120 days. As part of that due diligence, one of the things that they are trying to do is to see about getting the spur, uh, to come off, because that really will make this property worth a lot more to them and to us when it comes to sales tax. Um, and then a couple of the things before we, uh, the due diligence ends, there needs to be a development agreement, uh, to finalize what the costs are for the subdivision. Uh, we're also concerned, uh, the city is, about landscaping and what this is gonna look like as people come off into Springville on this exit. That'll be, uh, something we'll have to agree through a development agreement. And then finally, uh, we still need to, to get some good language in the development agreement to ensure that this use will be there. Now, uh, with, if we can't come to agreement, uh, on a development agreement, do the, through the due diligence, uh, then the agreement, uh, we're allowed to terminate the agreement. Uh, and that just puts us back in the same place we are today, but if we're able to go through, then what you're gonna see eventually is close to a $10 million sell of 28.86, uh, acres and 50-plus million dollars coming in on sales that will be taxed, which will be a, a great, uh, uh, sales tax into the future. So... So any questions for me? Oh, I just wanna make sure I answered all the questions. And it looks like I have...
If they don't get the spur, they can tap. Is that what I heard?
What's that?
If they don't get the rail spur, they can tap?
Well, they do have due diligence period, and it's very typical and common that if, for something do, if something doesn't add up, then they can... Yeah, that's just a common part of a sales...
I just, they, they put that, the spur specifically, which I get, but...
Yeah. Well, the spurs, it, they didn't put that as part of due diligence, but usually due diligence, you can tap out for anything, or, yeah.
But there is railroad there currently, right?
There is. That's why they're excited about it, and, uh, from what we're being told right now, it looks pretty good. Like they're gonna get it.
Right, isn't it?
They've, they've, no. That one's the sharp.
Oh, is that sharp? Okay, so there'll still be trains going down that one? That's the other one, okay.
And it's my understanding, they've retained an expert on this, and they're feeling pretty good about it.
Yeah. There, there is one, uh, detail that I felt to mention. I did put it in my staff report. Uh, right now, and let me just see if I can even get to it really fast. Yeah, right here. Uh, it's hard to see there. There, this right here is a billboard. There's also a billboard here. And so there's two billboards that are part of this property. Those billboard leases, uh, do allow for a right of first refusal. That's one thing that billboard companies do, and then property owners for some sign, type, for some reason sign them, but they have the ability to do a first right of refusal. So part of that lease that we inherited with the purchase of this requires us to give them a 30-day first right of refusal. And so that was in your staff report I just felt to mention. So...
Okay. Any discussion? Any questions? We've discussed this at quite some length in the past, and so I think everybody's aware of what's going on.
There is a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So any, anything else from the council? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. If any of the public wants to make a comment or has any questions, you're welcome to come to the podium. Okay?
I'll motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing's closed. I'll entertain a motion for the resolution.
I'll make a...
Oh, go ahead, Jake. It's all you.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2024-28, approving the sale of approximately 28.86 acres of Springville City property at the approximate location of 1750 West, 1600 South, for the amount of $10,057,128.
I'll second. Okay, I got a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. Craig?
Yes.
Logan?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Mindy?
Is this something I need to recuse myself of or abstain from?
That's, that's up to you. So you, you have the ability to declare and vote, or to declare and not vote, or to simply vote?
Well, I declare not to vote.
Okay. So the resolution passes. Alright, uh, item number three. Consideration of an ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 3, Article 402, to amend the definition of automotive repair minor to include hydraulic repair. Carla?
Hello.
You're right on the ball. Look at you, right up at the podium already.
I know. I'm just so excited. Just couldn't control myself. Um, I don't have a presentation. I'm not as cool as John, but, um, so the Planning Commission heard this, um, at our last meeting in a public hearing, um, and they made some recommendations. Fortunately, the people on our Planning Commission know a lot more about hydraulic repair than I do. Um, and so they had some really good suggestions, um, as how to improve, um, the, the language. So originally Blake Weldon, who is here, um, owns Wasatch Hydraulics, and he operates, um, in the same building as Toppet coverage, pickup coverage. Um, and he leases just a small office space and then, um, a larger area where he actually does the hydraulic repair. Um, it is not an area that has a lift or has anything where vehicles would be brought in. It's just his bench. And there are some pictures in the staff report for the Planning Commission showing the bench and, and the work that he does there.
So, so how do you put up with those goofy Snellsons down there?
I wasn't gonna mention. Want you to know.
I, well, I think they are, but you know, whatever.
Talk about bias. Alright, um, so he was, um, working there. He came to us through, uh, through the process of getting a business license. And it was determined that the hydraulic repair was different enough, um, from auto repair minor that it didn't truly fit. And so as a result, was not an allowed use in the regional commercial zone. Um, after meeting with Blake, having him explain to me his process, um, learning, uh, more about hydraulic repair than I ever even knew there was, um, and then coming before the Planning Commission, we felt that what would work well for this while still maintaining the intent and the integrity of the regional commercial zone would be to add hydraulic repair and the, with the Planning Commission's suggestions, to make that minor, hydraulic repair minor, um, which would allow for no manufacturing of hydraulics. Um, it would limit the size to bench repair, um, only pieces that could be removed, and they even limited the size of, of the bench as far as it could extend, therefore narrowing the, um, the scope of the repairs that could be made, um, and, um, ensuring that, um, it, that there was not room to, uh, manipulate this and, and to be able to bring in more heavy-duty hydraulic repair. Another concern that the Planning Commission had is, um, the wastewater. That will be addressed through the business licensing process, um, as, uh, to, to deal with stormwater and, and to deal with drainage. Um, and Blake has already, um, made those, um, addressed those issues, um, with the business license. And so, w- we have got the, um, definitions that we will add hydraulic repair minor and then also make it an allowed use in the regional commercial zone in the land use matrix.
And so will that carry over to every regional commercial zone?
Yes, and that is why the Planning Commission felt narrowing it to something that was bench repair and, uh, limited the size would, uh, keep it in the same nature as having, um, in fact, it actually creates less noise and less disturbance than, than an oil change or, um, getting your tires rotated, which is also, uh, which is considered automobile repair minor.
And, and this was a unanimous yes vote from the...
Yes, after, with the, yes, with the recommendations that they made, with the, uh, with the changes that they made to the recommended definition.
Okay. Any questions? For Carla? Okay.
Looks like she's done anyway, so...
She's, she's done.
Is there a reason this kinda stuff can't be on the consent agenda? I mean, it's such a minor. I mean, I just, I mean, uh, that we wasted a lot of time on it, but I was...
Yeah. Okay.
It's good.
Well, entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve ordinance number 13-2024 to amend Title 11, Chapter 3, Article 402, definitions to add hydraulic repair minor and to amend Title 11, Chapter 4, Article 301, land use matrix to include hydraulic repair minor as a permitted use in the RC zone.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. This is roll call vote. Logan?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to item number four. I guess you're still in business, huh?
Yeah, congrats.
Good luck. Keep, keep those Snellson boys down there under control, will ya? Okay. They're my cousins.
I own Toppet.
Yeah. Okay, item number four, consideration of an ordinance amending the general plan map, that the official zone map be amended from the low-density residential to the medium dens- density residential land use category for properties located at 920 East Center, 928 East Center, and 1919 East, 100 South, Springville, Utah. Ooh, Laura's not here, is she? Ja, Josh gonna do it? Okay.
Thank you. This is an interesting, uh, situation where an amendment has been requested by the owner of this property here at, uh, the corner of 950 East and Center Street in order to facilitate the reconstruction, uh, rebuilding a new garage in essentially the location of a former garage or utilizing the existing setback. Uh, the background here is, here on the second page, in that we previously, the zoning here was R2, and in May 2003, uh, as part of the rezone that applied, uh, the Westfields, uh, all of the zoning to the Westfields annexation area, a bunch of the city was, uh, rezoned. So prior to 2003, this area up to Canyon Ave, to the west of Canyon Ave, uh, was within the R2 zone. That was rezoned in 2003 again. What that created is, made a lot, made a lot of the parcels non-conforming due to their narrow frontage and their narrow setbacks. So this property here, uh, desires to essentially utilize the setbacks for accessory structures, uh, that are permitted in the, uh, R2 zone, which was the historic zoning there. So as you can see, the side yard for accessory buildings, uh, between eight and 10 feet in height, or even greater than eight, than 10 feet in height, is three feet in the R2 and in the R15. And the... So this applicant spoke with the, spoke with planning staff, and we, uh, advised him that it would be more likely to receive staff approval, so he was able to, uh, speak to the joining property owners and move this R2 line over just, uh, to the, to the e, west boundary of 950 East, uh, so that it wasn't just a single property in that, uh, zoning falutological line. You can see these properties on the east side of 950 East are kind of the classic narrow frontage, uh, deep lots that were characteristic of the former zoning. That the lo, lots to the east are more of, uh, more of a modern configuration, uh, modern, modern lots in terms of their aspect ratio, depth to width. The, uh, impacts to this, uh, would, uh, potentially increase the development potential on this parcel at the rear of the sub, at the rear of the cul-de-sac. We have not gone through any type of engineering to determine exactly how much room is left after this cold, the west half of this cul-de-sac is completed. But it looks like the most, uh, the largest increase, the largest potential increase in development potential here, uh, using these lot sizes listed under the R2 zone would be one additional, uh, twin, oops, excuse me, one additional twin home lot. So that would essentially add, uh, result in two additional homes than what could be built there now. Uh, this was reviewed by Planning Commission, and they recommended, uh, to the city council to recommend approval of both the general plan and the zone map amendment. I didn't speak much to the general plan amendment, but the general plan amendment's required, uh, because R2 falls, falls under a different residential general land use category in the general plan than the current zoning does. So we needed to amend both the general plan and the zoning map. And that's all I have.
Josh, we go back to that one where it's on Center Street and just confirm with me that... Josh, we go back to that one where it's on Center Street and just confirm with me the one before that, or that one right there. It's the lot directly to the west that was already in the R2. Is that what you were saying earlier?
This was all in the R2 up to Canyon Ave, or you mean this one here?
That one right there.
Yes, that is currently in the R2.
So he could, he could turn that thing into four lots in theory, if he had access to the back, but definitely two.
Definitely two. Flag lots would be.
Yeah, well, I don't think he has enough frontage for a flag lot and two lots.
Right, so if this hadn't had, didn't have a house on it here, it could probably fit, you know, two duplexes on each frontage perhaps.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Did you all receive the email from Mr. War?
Mike, Mike talked to him. Yeah, I, I talked to Mr. War, I think his name was. Yeah, he had some concerns about this zoning and so forth. But after I chatted, well, emailed him back and forth, he dropped his concerns. He was fine with it. He, he just didn't understand the background and so he was fine with it.
I think it kind of puts it to bed with Josh saying there could only be those two units.
Well, it's Ron Lowe that has that, that middle piece.
And I, I've talked to Ron too. He's fine with it. Do, I, I thought we needed a public hearing for a zone change. Do we? No?
A public hearing was conducted by the planning commission.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right.
I'll motion to approve ordinance 14-2024 to amend the land use map of the general plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential as shown on Exhibit A.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. It's a roll call vote. Mindy?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Yes? Jake?
Yes.
Logan?
Yes.
Okay, agenda item number five. Consideration of an ordinance amending the official zone map from the R110 zone to the R2 zone for properties located at 920 East Center, 928 East Center, and 919 East, 100 South. We're just going through the same thing, right?
Go ahead and make a motion. A motion to approve ordinance 15-2024 to approve an amendment to the official zone map from R110 single-family residence to R2 single-two-family residential as shown on Exhibit B.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. It's a roll call vote. Logan?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, item number six has been continued. Anybody have anything else that they need to bring up? Okay, come on up.
After you asked a question about the slide on stormwater, I went upstairs and fixed it. I put the data together. I literally didn't have time.
Oh, for the other cities, that part?
Yeah, so I wanted to show that to you really quick. Oh, man, this one's small. About to close it upstairs. Okay, so, there it is.
Just looking at that immediately, just so you're aware, on the bottom there are smaller cities. Storm drain was implemented based upon the size of your community. And so I, I don't know them well enough to know if they've even triggered yet. But even if, if they have, they've had a system much less time than we have.
Yeah, and Mapleton, for example, they do sumps everywhere. Where they just pump it in the ground, they just stick it in the ground. We can't do that in the Westfields. Ground table's too high, it doesn't work, clays and all that. So this is, yeah, I just didn't get, get it done, so there you go.
This is great. Thank you.
All right.
That's very helpful.
Thanks, Brad. Okay.
I, I imagine, sorry, I'm just looking at this. We're jumping from kind of middle of the pack all the way up to the top. And I can't help but thinking that there's probably other cities are going through the same process we are considering. I mean, and this is our maximum allowable. I imagine other cities did, like you said, it was kind of foisted upon us by the state. And so everyone entered in at a very low number. But those real costs have to be paid in some way, whether by the residents or by the new businesses and homes moving in.
We'll come back with a recommendation on all of them.
Thank you.
All right.
I motion that we end this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.